...part of the meeting on the Courts Video Public Meetings Act. This meeting was contained in a list of meetings set by resolution dated January 1, 2016. This meeting will not substantially go past 10:30 p.m. Anna, roll call, please.
Mr. DiQuillo?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Kingsley?
Here.
Mr. Store?
Here.
Based on the fact that we have a couple of professionals here who are needed to speak with us in the exec session, we're going to move the exec session up to the front tonight so that we can get them on their way. Ms. Kingsley?
Whereas the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-1 expressly provide that a public body may move into executive session and exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which the public body discusses any of the nine areas set forth in NJSA 10: 4-12B. And whereas the Township Council of the Township of Berkeley Heights has determined it necessary to move into executive session to discuss the following subjects, all of which are included in the after said exceptions: One, attorney-client privilege, litigation, Connell tax appeal; Two, attorney-client privilege, litigation, affordable housing. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Berkeley Heights that it does hereby move into executive session pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B to discuss the after said matters, it is further resolved that after said discussions shall be made public either at the public meeting following said executive session, where such time as any litigated or personal matters are concluded, or upon conclusion of any negotiations or related discussions, or as otherwise specified, be it resolved this resolution to take effect pursuant to law, April 19, 2016.
Second.
Motion to second in discussion. Vote?
Mr. DiQuillo?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kingsley? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Edgar, we'll probably take the tax appeal first, so... Okay?
All right.
Marty Allen.
I was going to ask you, Bob.
Good.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Conference session. Mr. DiQuillo?
Uh... What?
Nothing. Mr. Delia?
I have a small one. Last night at the Environmental Commission, we were discussing an email that came to us, and then a second email came through the rest of the council today about the pipeline and setting aside $5,000 for litigation. And I thought we should talk about this.
Ed, let me...
Pretty important.
No, it is. I think it's six, but that was the amount that the Chatham mayor, who was kind of taking the lead, I think that's what Chatham put in, six. I don't know whether everybody else put in six. We had discussed, I had discussed with Mike Mursow, if it becomes a necessary circumstance where we are required to do that, do we have that? And I... Michael, is it correct that we could find that? Is that correct? Yeah. That's for legal fees. Ed, right?
Exactly.
Right. That's for legal fees. So I'm waiting for some more information from them with respect to... You know, see, I think I may have mentioned this at about four months ago when I talked about this a little bit. The concern I have is if there's 20 towns, and let's say everybody comes on board for $6,000, it's 120 grand, and we proceed, and then at some point in time, somebody says, "I'm not going to give anymore." All right? Well, then you got half the town, then, which is really, if I'm the other side, that's when I'm done picking everybody off, okay? And that's always been an interest of mine, a concern of mine, because when do you stop the spigot? Okay? When does it stop? So... But, you know, you're not going to know unless you start it. So we're going to have to take a look at that. I agree.
Yeah, because it's something, again, I think we just have to look forward to, to see that we're gonna need to do something, and I think we have to be part of it.
Yep.
Hopefully, like you say, I'm sure it's not going to end it one shot, but I don't think we have much choice.
Yeah. I don't disagree.
Okay, that was it. Thanks.
Mr. Peron?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes, Mayor. We have another update on the affordable housing front. This one is actually pretty favorable. So again, I preface my comments with, we are in active litigation on the issue, so we need to be mindful of that and guarded in our remarks. That having been said, I mentioned that there was a trial scheduled, and in furtherance of the case management order that had been entered by the court, expert reports are being worked on and are due, and Fair Share Housing's expert, Mr. Kinsey, filed his expert report today as it relates to Union County allocating everyone's fair share, according to that expert in the county. And in the past, based on the original report, that expert had said Berkeley Heights' share was 858 units. In today's report with the court, our number dropped to 598. So there was a drop of 260. We still believe that number is inaccurate. Our expert believes the number is much lower, but as far as the ability to deal with the issue, continue settlement discussions, if they begin with fair share housing, all of that is favorable in that if you're starting at a much larger number, you have a much broader bridge, and this allows us to narrow the goalposts, so to speak. So that's positive. The other thing is, you'll see, is in addition to our agenda tonight, and we apologize for that, but the tentative agreement subject to vote was presented to us today, and council will discuss it further, but we're going to be discussing the King's property and entering into a resolution and associated MOU on that, which you'll hear later in the meeting. Switching gears, the other thing I wanted to discuss was, we've been getting some emails on a matter that's where the Board of Ed is the applicant for a cell tower up at the high school. That matter is before the zoning board of adjustment. We've gotten emails from citizens there. It's an active matter before the zoning board of adjustment. We can't really step in and get involved with it, but what I would say to interested members of the public is they should go to the zoning board of adjustment and make their feelings known. You know, and I think, I see Mr. St. Cagliari sitting in the audience as a citizen, but you might take back to the board that we are receiving comments of concern from the local residents.
As we are.
I figured you were. Just in case you weren't, you're now so notified. You're welcome. That's all, Mayor.
Mr. Fisher, just as a follow-up, the town that was chosen was Fanwood, is that correct, for the first trial?
Fanwood, and then Springfield was the backup.
And apparently, I think the Fanwood matter is leased on hold right now. Is that correct? I mean, there's some kind of a... It hasn't...
I, you know, again, what I mentioned, I think it was at the last meeting, what will happen is if a town is able to settle with the plaintiffs, or I guess they'd be plaintiffs, defendants, plaintiffs...
Or intervenors, actually.
Interveners. Then the next town would step up. I heard they were in discussions. But again, the way this process works, Springfield is to be prepared for trial on that date.
Same day.
I'd imagine if both Fanwood and Springfield were to settle, there would need to be a new schedule put in place.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pastore?
Just letting you know that, as everybody probably sees already, that the memorials is moving forward. They've got the sidewalk being put in on Springfield Avenue and Plainfield Avenue, I mean, and the tree's probably going to go back in tomorrow. Well, that's a good thing.
That's great.
So we should have everything done by early May.
Very good.
According to our schedule, so.
Very good.
It's moving forward.
Okay. Ms. Kingsley?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Township council reports. Mr. DiQuillo?
Nothing to report today.
Mr. Delia?
Just one small one. The, we were discussing the parking over on, by Sherman Avenue and Springfield Avenue. They painted the curb yellow in front of Subzone, and I don't know how, but it's definitely the wrong yellow, and it's a really, really horrible-looking yellow, and it's really bad look, bad, and like, not a solid color. And not only that, but I really think that all four corners should have been painted. I don't know if that's possible, but it's, you know, everywhere else, the yellow is the same as the double-yellow line. Can we paint it?
No, we painted it.
Oh.
We painted it. It's a bright color.
And it's, you know, I'm standing across the street, and it looks pretty...
You can see it.
...horrid.
You can see it, and I suppose if you own the Subzone, you want everybody to see it. It is bright. I don't disagree with that.
If anything, it matches the Subzone sign, but...
Well, that may have been a consideration.
But it's, I think it needs to be addressed and...
Tone down?
Well, not just that, but all four corners really should be freshly painted to keep them, you know, in line. And I know this one's a real stretch, but after I paid attention to that, the yellow on the curbs going all the way through the center of town, where, because we have three lanes, it's supposed to be yellow on the curbs all the way, and I don't think there's much, if any, yellow left.
You talking about the fog line?
The, no. The curbs going through the center of town.
Yeah.
Years ago, they were all painted yellow, because wherever it's three lanes, there's no parking. Parking starts, let's say, by the movie theater or by Sammy's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And from Sammy's to Trafficway at Snyder.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It should be yellow, and I don't know if there's any yellow left.
But nobody's parking there?
No, but it's just, it looks really bad.
That there's no yellow there?
That it's a little bit of yellow. It's, you know, it's very...
Well, perhaps we have other things to deal with, but we'll talk to Bob Bakino and see if we can tone down the yellow.
I mean, the main one is by Sherman and Springfield, but I just thought I'd throw the other one out there.
I'll talk to Joe tomorrow. We'll see.
Thank you, John.
See if we went with the wrong yellow. If we corrected.
Mr. Fisher?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Mr. Pastore?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Peron?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Kingsley?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Last Thursday, the Gateway Chamber of Commerce had their annual dinner. They basically host all the mayors in the county down in Newark, at the airport, one of the hotels in the airport, and I am pleased to report that our business administrator, John Bicicolo, was one of four individuals up for the Business Administrator of the Year Award. And I know John worked very hard at getting people to make calls and send votes in for him.
Obviously, not enough calls.
Not enough calls. And I want to congratulate John. And obviously, it reflects well on his efforts, but also, obviously, for all those that work in John's office, and all the department heads, and everybody working together, because you're not going to, you know, get ourselves in a position where there's such recognition without everybody working together. So that's an add of person to everybody, okay? But congratulations to John. Other than that, that's it. John?
Okay. Couple of things. DPW, Street Sweeper was out. We did another 219 miles, picked up 107 cubic yards of street sweeping. We're in high school, just about finished. That don't mean that everybody has been done once in the past couple of months now. We've gone through all sections. Chipping, we're in section three, we're almost complete. Potholes, we filled eight and a half tons of asphalt in potholes. Catch basins have been done on Sutton, Hampton, Regent, Janet Lane, and Ralph Place. All catch bases have been cleaned and inspected, and we're doing repairs before we do paving. They're almost done Thursday. The catch basin should be complete. Starting on Thursday, we have paving to start, milling and paving, and I will give you the schedule, John, but just so everyone knows, and Bobby, I'll send you a copy, and we'll put it out also on Swift Reach and Facebook and website. 421, Janet Lane, and then they're going to move to the intersection of Sutton Drive and Plainfield Ave. 422, still milling Sutton Drive. 423, Whitney and Hampton. 424, clean up in Old Forge Lane and sweeping. 425, paving starting on Janet and then move to the intersection of Sutton Drive and Plainfield. Thursday, paving Whitney and Hampton, and Friday, the 27th, remainder of Sutton Drive neighborhood, and then move on to Old Forge Lane. So that's this coming week. Those roads will be paved. The fields, we have started doing, all the fields should be completed by Friday, all our baseball fields. We're cleaning them up, filling the holes, et cetera, et cetera. At the firehouse, the generator is done. We're filling the trench in right now. The punch list from our electrician has been completed. We're just waiting for an enunciator switch to come in within the next couple of weeks, and then that'll be done. We did replace 26 grates with the new retrofitted grate for bicycles also. That's all I have from DPW. Let's move on, if I may. One thing, Bobby, and I need to send this thing, everybody needs to be aware, and we will get this out. Starting on 425, American Water has got to lay down 8,800 feet of 12-inch pipe going through the center of town. This will be on the side, going towards Long Hill Township, the westbound side. They're going to start on 425. They work 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., and this will continue through. They will be done putting the pipeline in Berkeley Heights in the middle to late June. Paving will be completed by the end of August. In that timeframe, there'll be two-way traffic will be maintained, and all businesses will be open, and there'll be access to all of them also. If anyone has any questions or anything, contact myself or Bob, and Bobby, I'll get you a copy, so we make sure we get that out. From our building department, we did receive $50,000 grant for paving from Union County. Bids for recycling were received, but they were too high, so we're rejecting them, and we're going out for new bids. We spoke to several other recyclers. We're trying to get on board to give us a bid on it. Bob Bakino is actually attending the Solid Waste Association right now, and he did speak to one of the recyclers that happened to be there, so we should get a bid out of them. We did receive quotes on doing the next phase on the fire department apron. We're doing that in sections, whichever ones are bad, so we're going to do another section of that very shortly. We did get three quotes on the engineering for the heating and ventilation at the fire department. We met with Connell and the building department to discuss some issues on resolving permits and that type of thing last Thursday. So they're moving along. They're predicting the hotel should open December, is what the date is now they're giving us. Yard waste has been going on. We got a little surprised. We found out that the county had their site closed. They're not accepting yard waste until June. Would have been nice to know that. We had a scramble, and we found another yard to take it, actually at the same price. So it didn't hurt us, it just made us do a little legwork quickly. From our recreation department, indoor spring programs begin the week of March 23, and outdoor ones begin this week, all run through the middle of June. The eight weeks of preschool camps, they have filled 224 out of 240 slots already. Registration for playground camp in Columbia Park will start in the first week of June. Wednesday night, they will be meaning to plan a Memorial Day parade, and they will be supporting the PAL opening day parade this Saturday, April 23, and the upcoming Mother's Day 5K race on Sunday, May 8. From our wastewater treatment plant, we had a couple things. Compliance, we're at no problem there, no safety issues. We did bring on, we hired the sixth man, because we had pairs over there. We only have four people. We hired one last year. When we had a DPW worker leave, we actually split his salary. We were able to get two-for-one. One of the guys are going to the wastewater treatment, so now we will have three pairs of twos at the wastewater plant. The trickling filter rehabilitation we've been talking about, the arms and the center mask. We got Tom come up with a great idea. We're looking at using PVC for the arms. It's been done in one other place, so we're going to get some feedback and then see how that's worked. Will it hold the load? How do we have to support it, et cetera, et cetera? The other thing that I brought up, we had a meeting with Rapid last week. On the center post, there's a bearing that goes around it. They need to cut that off to see if that mask can be saved. We're looking at $6,000 to just get to that point. My recommendation is why don't we x-ray it? It's going to cost us a lot less money to determine if that center mask can be repaired. If not, let's not invest six grand in it. So we're working on that. The jet vac truck is out of service. It's going to cost us 10 grand to get that fixed. Five of that comes from Long Hill, because we're shared service. The skated design, we've got three proposals back, and the low one was $87,000. When we looked into, as Councilman DiQuillo and Mr. Pastore had recommended, on the transfer switches, we had looked at possibly kind of band-aiding those. We were looking at somewhere around 40 grand. It was time and materials. We weren't sure where that was going to go. Tom did find someone that with today's technology would replace everything. It would be one and done. We wouldn't have to worry again. We're looking at about 106. But the recommendation is not to patch it, because after you get done patching it, if we have an incident, the fines from DEP will skyrocket, and that 106 will look like cheap money. So we're looking at replacing it totally. From our building department, we had 45 new applications. We issued 43 permits. We reviewed 49 plans, and we collected fees of $6,856. And I believe that is all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, John. We have a motion for Mr. Pastore on the township council reports.
Yes.
Okay.
I move that township council reports be accepted and approved.
Second? Second in discussion? Vote?
Mr. DiQuillo?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Kingsley?
Yes.
Store? Yes.
Thank you. We've reached the moment and the time the public hearing, final adoption of 2016 municipal budget, is introduced on March 22, 2016. Anna, if you would, please.
Mayor, this is the time. Thanks for the public hearing on the 2016 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the mayor and council on March 22, 2016, was advertised in full as requested by law on March 25, 2016, together with notice of hearing for this time. Printed copies have been available to the public during the past week, and a copy is supplied to anyone desiring a copy.
Okay. Anyone who's not secured a copy, there's at least three or four more sitting there at the front, if you want to come up and...
Are we going to, Mr. ... Are we going to, Mike, give an overview?
Yeah, briefly, but let me just conclude this process, John, and we will do that. Anyone? Everyone? Okay. If you would, please, Anna.
I have a resolution regarding the reading of the budget by title only.
Mr. Pastore?
To be voted on.
Okay.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move it, move its adoption.
Okay. This is to read the budget by title only, not read the entitled budget. That's what we're voting on. Vote, please? Excuse me, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. DiQuillo?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Can you just explain, what are we voting exactly on?
To just read the budget out to the public.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Peron?
Yes. Okay. The resolution is adopted. Before opening the hearing, just the procedure will be the same as any procedure for any other hearings we have here. Recognize, excuse me, identify yourself at the podium. Please direct all your questions to the chair, to the extent anyone up here can answer them promptly, and/or Mr. Mursow, who is here, can respond. We will do so. Before we open the meeting, though, Mr. Mursow, do you have an overview for us, if you would, please?
The 2015 budget, overall budget, Township and Library was $18,469,785. The 2016 budget comes in at $18,763,970, an increase of $294,185.157%. The average increase on the average residential property would be about $60.
Six-zero?
Six-zero, please. Thank you. Is that microphone working? Can you guys hear?
Would you repeat the most important part? Could you repeat the most important part, that being that the average increase?
The average increase was $60, six-zero.
Okay. On a home assessed at?
At a home assessed at 304701. It's an increase.
That's a tax assessment, not value of the home, correct?
Correct. And it's an increase of 1.57%.
Is there anything else you wish to add, Mr. Mursow?
That's it.
Okay. I'd ask you just to remain there in case there are any questions I might be asked. That being said, I now open the public hearing on the 2016 municipal budget.
Tom Forger, 14 Dorset Road. The Communications Committee requested $22,500, but has not said what it will be used for. They have not filed an annual report for 2015, and they have never provided an annual report as required by the ordinance that created the committee. Last year, they spent less than, they spent about $12,825. So my questions are these. What does the council intend to use this appropriation for, and what restrictions are there on the use of these taxpayer funds?
If I may?
Sure, Mike.
So typically, the communications is spent on various programming. This year, we are including also, we'll have various website fees and web development fees, which will cover that extra $8,000. And the controls are basically, I mean, every penny gets approved via purchase order by the council, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Website fees, and what else?
Well, we're developing a new website, so all that is going to be covered, as well as the programming that's been ongoing for several years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Harold Matula, 5 Aces Road. Can you tell me how much has been budgeted for redevelopment services from Michael Mastrata, and where those services would be found in the budget?
For Mr. Mastrata in particular, I cannot, I can give you...
Mayor, if I may just add one point to that, it's going to be coming up later on this evening. There are some other redevelopment, we're just want to clarify when we talk about redevelopment, because there's some redevelopment projects that the town's going to be moving forward with, that the costs will be covered by the developers through an escrow agreement. So just want to be clear, when you say redevelopment costs, there's going to be some that are going, that won't be covered by municipal funds, but will be held by escrow from developers as well.
Because I know right now, we have the municipal building, the library, Little Flower, and then I think Hundred Locust, and then also Kings.
Yes, yeah, and with the Locust agreement, there's going to be an ex, Locust property, there'll be an escrow agreement that covers the Michael Mastratas and future professional fees cost in connection with the redevelopment process, and the same will be also, if approved by the council, included in the development of the King's site as pursuant to the MOU that's going to be before the council this evening. So there, I just wanted to point out, I didn't mean to jump in on Mike, but that there are some that actually won't be coming from the township coffers, it'll be coming from the private developer.
Are those in the budget, and they'll just get reimbursed, or are they not in the budget at all?
They're not in the budget at all. The developer would be required to post an escrow account with the township, make a[1765.66] deposit, and we would work down off his account.
And then for Mastrata's fees, do you know what account they would come out of?
Again, I can't give you his specifically, but if you, I don't know if you picked up a copy of the budget, but on Sheet 26, there's a specific line for municipal redevelopment. And just to add to Mr. Sordillo, at some point, this project also, the developers will open an escrow and assume responsibilities for professional payments.
Okay, so what's on?
Sheet 26. $100,000.
And that covers, was that covered the architects too?
Correct.
Okay, so anything that would be needed, architects, planners?
Correct.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else? I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. Is there such a motion? So, a motion by Ms. Kingsley, seconded by Mr. Pastore. Any discussion? Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pistor?
Yes.
Mr. Perron?
Okay, I will now read Section 2, the adopting resolution for the 2016 budget. Being resolved by the governing body of the Township of Berkeley Heights, County of Union, that the budget here and before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated and the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization in the amount of $12,662,059 for municipal purposes and $1,072,539 for your minimum library levy. Mr. Pastore?
I offer the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
Second.
Second. Ms. Kingsley, motion is second. Any discussion? Vote?
Mr. DeQuilla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Pistor?
Yes.
Mr. Perron?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Okay. Approval of the minutes. That would be Mr. Perron.
I move that the minutes of the regular meetings, held on April 5 as a public meeting, July 8 and July 22, 2014, as executive sessions, as distributed, be accepted and approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Vote?
Mr. DeQuilla?
Yes, on the public meetings and abstain on the executive sessions.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes, on the public meeting, abstain on the exec sessions.
Mrs. Kingsley?
I have to abstain from the public session, but yes to the executive sessions.
Mr. Pistor?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. DeQuilla?
Mr. Perron?
Oh, Mr. Perron?
Yes.
How do you feel about it? Strongly. You feel strongly, okay. Okay, is everybody voted?
Yes.
Okay. I have, but I don't have to.
You don't have to vote.
Mr. DeQuilla, if you would, please.
Yes, I move to open the hearing on the agenda items only.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Vote?
Mr. DeQuilla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Pistor?
Yes.
Mr. Perron?
Motion on hearing on agenda items only is open. The usual rules apply.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Leister, could you speak at this, somewhere along this time about the, I think it's Resolution 6 on the bugs?
Ash trees?
The ash, the ash-bore and beetles.
Yeah, sure.
And I thank you for coming for this.
Always a pleasure to be with you guys. So, there's bad news and good news. Bad news is, there's a little beetle that's called Emerald Ashbor. There are other kinds of insects, but this Emerald Ashbor is about a half an inch long. And it's there. It's in New Jersey. That means that it's going to make its way here to Berkeley Heights. That's the bad news. The good news is that the state recognizes that this is a problem. And it has available grants to address this problem. And we have applied for a grant to address it. The grant is for about $25,000. Probably won't cover all the costs of what we're going to do, but it'll get, give us a good start. And it will, it's taking a strategy that is kind of cost-efficient. We know that because Purdue University has a tool, and I use that tool to try out different strategies. And the strategy that we're applying for, or that we're arguing for on the grant is this strategy called Urban Slam, which has been researched. I don't know whether I should say anything else. Maybe somebody wants to ask a question.
I have a question. The Emerald, Emerald?
Emerald Ashbor.
When did the Emerald make an appearance?
It made an appearance, actually, last year. We actually put up a trap in Berkeley Heights. We didn't catch any. But it's in, it was found in Bridgewater and it was found in Cranford.
What do they do? In other words, do they ravage a plant or?
They kill the tree.
They kill the tree.
They kill the tree.
Okay, so? They will kill all ash trees. It doesn't matter whether they're white ashes or black ashes, they'll kill any ash.
And the $25,000, which may not be enough, I understand that, would be used to purchase some form of a toxic substance which is designed to kill the?
That would be part of our plan. Our plan would be to basically look at the whole inventory of ash trees, which is numbering about 600. And then, basically, take down ash trees that are under three inches of DBH, because those ash trees probably wouldn't survive anyway. So, we'd get rid of those ash trees. We'd replace them with other ash, with other trees that aren't ashes. And then, there would be a process of evaluating the remaining trees and treating those trees.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you, Rich, this is a, there's no money from, matching funds from the town on this?
There's no matching funds from the town. Taking down trees is part of our normal budget, so we would have DPW people do that. We already talked with Bob Okino to do that. So, that's something that we can do within our normal budget. In addition, we would need to replace trees. We have a tree fund to replace trees. That's not coming out of our budget.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work to go for this grant. Mr. Rich did all this.
Tom Forreger, 14 Dorset Road. On Resolution 3, which has to do with the resolution for an area in need of redevelopment, 100 Locust Avenue, will there be a resolution to pay Mr. Mastrata to do the study for the planning board?
Again? Yeah, Mayor, that goes to what I was saying before. We're actually in the process of negotiating the escrow agreement with the developer. Were they going to cover all the cost of Mr. Mastrata?
Okay. Has he done any work on this already?
Not on the, not on the redevelopment study, only on half of the municipality in connection with the affordable housing negotiations.
Okay. And now, there is a provision in the Redevelopment Act, Criteria H, which is obviously satisfied by this property. Criteria H says if you're within metropolitan planning area one, then you meet that criteria. So, why not just have him say, "We meet H," instead of spending any money on this?
It's the process we need to go through to justify it. In cases any challenges, we don't know. We have to make sure that we do it right. That's all I can say with regard to that. I would never just recommend just going on whim without doing the background and work to make sure, you know, the site meets all, what all, any of, or all of the criteria can meet. I'd set forth.
I'm not sure the developer would want to do that either.
Exactly.
Exposing himself.
And it's on their dime.
But, well, he's paying for it, right?
Right. So, they would want, they wouldn't want a chance that where you get a redevelopment does, that gets, can be challenged and it doesn't meet the criteria, just because?
How could it not meet it if it's within the area?
That's why they do the study.
That's why they do the study.
Exactly. I can't say, I can't say that as the attorney.
You would agree H is clearly satisfied, right?
Well, Tom?
We're not paying for it.
Yeah, we're not paying for it. I think, I think a concern might be that if we just stipulate, for lack of a better word, that H covers, and then somebody decides to appeal it, and the court finds that H is insufficient, when in fact, we could have gone through a hearing and may have found that A, C, D, E, and H. So, now you're walking into the appellate court with four sections as opposed to one section. That would just, off the top of my head, be one reason why you do it.
And Mayor, this is because it's affordable housing development, could be under scrutiny from entities who are not even in town. You have Fair Share Housing who may not agree with the, with the development, and they want more units than what we agreed to, because they want everyone to build thousands of units. So, they may appeal it just for that reason alone. They've done that in other towns. So, it's something, we just have to make sure we do it by the books, and that means go put it forth, the, the study.
Can I ask, Fair Share Housing, I think, this is a little off-topic, but you did bring it up. You said they wanted 598 units of affordable housing, right?
Yeah, they, their last report, the original report said 858.
Right, but 598 they're down.
The new report, the new report, which again, nobody's had a chance to analyze yet, but their new number, when you go to the table in the report for Berkeley Heights, is 598. So, it went down 260.
Right. Now, given that number, how many units of housing would you need to build total?
Again, we've mentioned, we've mentioned in other meetings that it's a five...
Five times that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, that's about...
It's still three, over 3,000.
So, they're suggesting that we build 3,000 units of housing?
Yes, and before, they were suggesting over 4,000.
Okay, so we're down to 3,000. Now, how many units of housing do we have now?
We, I think the assumption is it's about 4,000.
We have 4,500 homes. I don't know if that includes all apartments. I'm not sure.
4,500, okay.
But again, we've, we went...
So, they want to add to the existing stock of 4,500, 3,000 more.
Right, but we discussed at other meetings that, you know, you get allocated a number without regard necessarily to what you might be able to build, and then you're only able to build what you can reasonably build, and then there's a gap called unmet need.
What happens to that gap?
If there's a future ability to do it, you might have to build it. But, again, this is all, their number is what it is. We don't believe that their number's accurate, and our expert has a number that's a lot lower.
Thanks.
Hi, Hendrick Raymakers, 180 Timber. I have a question. There's a memorandum of understanding between the Township and Berkeley Heights, let's say regarding Kings. This particular memorandum specifies things like height. We had a memorandum of understanding with the 100 Locust property, and there were no such items in there. Is this a next step? I'm, see, I'm trying to figure out, once you have the redevelopment approved, or whether it's deemed a redevelopment area, it means anybody in town has no longer any say over what happens. So, I'm trying to figure out, when is this kind of stuff decided? Who decides it?
Mayor, I can respond if that's all right.
Thank you, Joe.
The, when we go into the negotiations with the various developers, certain properties, we negotiate certain terms with specifically for those properties and those proposed developments. Doesn't mean that they're not going to be addressed later on. For example, you brought up height. That was, that, this is in the downtown, that's a major issue that the council and the township wanted to address right at the start, because if it didn't meet what we would find acceptable for height, it was a non-starter. Now, with regard to other properties, that, not that it's not important, but it's not the, you know, primary objective or the primary point that's being, that was being negotiated right from the start. But that doesn't mean that height's not going to be part of it. For example, with the Locust Ave, what, after the redevelopment is deter, if the property is determined an area redevelopment, and we start discussing and negotiating the redevelopment plan, that's going to be addressed in there. Because you'll see in the redevelopment, in the MOU with the Locust property as well, there's a term in there that specifically says that all these other terms still are subject to negotiation and have to be approved before final approval of any redevelopment plan or construction would be built. So, I just don't remember all this off in my head. Yeah, I mean, all those items were addressed, excluding height, was something that we spoke about and that we're negotiating, but might not have had as specific terms as we, as included in the Kings property. But it's something that is going to be addressed along the way. It just wasn't something that was able to be included in the MOU, based on the timing of getting it done, submitting it to the court, because we were, at the time, we were up to much structure deadlines. So, it's just part of the process, and just different projects have different priorities in each one.
Right, but to be clear, to, with respect to his particular question on height, when the redevelopment plan is developed, the public gets a chance?
There's a hearing.
Absolutely. I'm sorry if I missed that portion of the question.
Yeah, so I think that's what you were getting at, right? That there's going to be...
At what point in time do I have input and/or can I find out what has been decided?
Yes, when we were negotiating and preparing the redevelopment plan, potentially, I mean, I don't know what will happen, the procedures at that time. There'll definitely be a required public hearing on it at both the council level and at the planning board level. So, there will be two public hearings required by law, but there could be more. Until we get to that point, I can't say, but you'll have at least a minimum of two opportunities to speak.
So, is this similar to the initial presentation that we had on Kings, let's say? Is that one of the steps, or this is something completely different? Remember, initially, they came with the U shape and the parking garage and all that stuff?
Right, well, that was before the whole affordable, if it were...
Okay, yeah, true, true.
Same time. That was way before the affordable housing. So, the whole game changed since then.
Okay, I just want to make sure that no decisions, let's say, are final, and I missed my opportunity to give input or react or see.
Yeah, there'll be two public hearings. One, it's similar to adoption of a zoning ordinance. You're going to have a public hearing, except you'll have one before the council and before the planning board on the adoption of the redevelopment plan. It falls similar to the process of a zoning ordinance.
So, the redevelopment, deeming something in need of redevelopment, means that you can also change the zoning, right?
That's just to see if it meets the criteria of whether, whether or not it can even proceed under redevelopment. There'll be no, in that part of the process, there's no discussion on what would be built, or what can be built, design criteria, nothing of that. It's just the existing property as is, whether it meets the criteria set forth in the statute.
Okay, because I, because it's L1, so it's not non-residential. So, by adopting this particular resolution, you can change the zoning. Is that one of the effects?
Well, in a redevelopment process, it wouldn't be part of this resolution, it wouldn't be part of this investigation, but ultimately, in the redevelopment process, what you create in, by adopting the redevelopment plan, it becomes essentially an overlay zone over what is existing there. So, the redevelopment plan becomes the zoning for the property. That's in any redevelopment project. And so, that is what controls. If there's any gaps, then the underlying zoning fills in those gaps, but the redevelopment plan is what now controls. It could change uses, it could change setbacks. That is the controlling zoning guidance.
Jess Tramansky, 30 Lawrence Drive. So, I just have a numbers question, just for my own understanding. We very quickly ran through numbers for co-re requirements and said, "Well, to get the co-re requirements, we'd have to build five times that number of units." But the number that I'm accustomed to seeing, and I see it in one of the resolutions tonight, is an affordable housing component of 15%. So, that suggests that it would be more than five times that we have to build. I'm just trying to reconcile that in my mind.
Yeah, I said around five times. It's some are 15, some you get greater credit for, depending on what you build, group homes or by bedroom, not by house. So, the rule of thumb is generally five to one, but you're right, that would be, you know, six or seven.
Right, okay. Right, okay.
But there's other, depending on what you build, there's different ratios, for example.
Devil is always in that detail.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, seeing nobody, I move to close the hearing on the agenda items only.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Hannah, would you please read the appropriate ordinance?
Bond Ordinance, Amending Bond Ordinance Number 4-2014 of the Township of Berkeley Heights in the County of Union, New Jersey, finally adopted August 12, 2014, in order to amend the description of the project.
Okay, I move to open the public hearing, and the ordinance is read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
It's now open. Seeing no one, do I have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing, and the ordinance is read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the ordinance is read by the clerk, and hearing held hereon be adopted on final passage, and that the clerk be directed to advertise same in the Courier News.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Yes, great. We discussed this a little bit when we introduced this, but do we know how many signs are going to be put up yet? Or where? Or how much this is costing us?
Mike shaking his head. I don't think they have an answer yet.
Again, I will repeat, I can't see why we should be changing an ordinance when we don't even know how much this is costing us. So, again, I will vote no.
Vote, please.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Yes. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Store?
Seeing...
Vote.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question. Does this impact Uber?
No.
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 Okay.
Okay, vote?
No, wait.
Oh, you're going to read?
We got to close, right?
Yes. You got to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. Mr. Store?
Seeing...
Vote.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question. Does this impact Uber?
No.
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 Okay.
Okay, vote?
No, wait.
Oh, you're going to read?
We got to close, right?
Yes. You got to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
I move to close the public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
I move that the ordinance is read by the clerk, and hearing held hereon be adopted in final passage, and that the clerk be directed to advertise same in the Courier News.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Hannah, please.
On orders of the Township of Berkeley Heights, County of Union, State of New Jersey, amending, revising, and supplementing Chapter 10.34 entitled Parking Restrictions of Title 10, entitled Vehicle and Traffic of the Code of the Township of Berkeley Heights to establish and amend the parking regulations on a portion of various roadways.
I move to open the public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
I move that the ordinance is read by the clerk, and hearing held hereon be adopted on final passage, and that the clerk be directed to advertise same in the Courier News.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
Resolutions. Mr. Delia?
I move Resolution 1, moving bill list dated April 19, 2016, in the amount of $223,514.87.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Dequilla?
Yes, I move Resolution Number 2, authorizing participation by the Berkeley Heights Police Department in the Union County Law Enforcement Officer Loan Program.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I just spotted a typo. On the second, whereas should be has, instead of as.
Okay, nice job, Mr. Fascher.
There you go.
Okay. Subject to that major amendment?
I like to be accurate where possible.
Okay, vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
I move Resolution 3, authorizing the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation utilizing Harbor Consultants, Inc., in order to recommend to the township council whether the property identified as Block 1901, Lot 35, located 100 Locust Avenue, is an area in need of redevelopment according to the criteria set forth in NJSA 40: A:12A-5.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
I move Resolution Number 4, authorizing the rejection of the recycling services bid as substantially exceeding the cost estimates.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Since you're doing so much on...
I did read it, the.
You know, to aid anyone sitting in the audience, could you just reference that?
Yeah, when the bids came back for the recycling, they were substantially higher than what we had in the budget. So what we did is we rejected them, and we've got an emergency contract with Giordano for the next four months so that recyclers continue to be picked up, which allows to go back out and try to get bids that are more in line with what we're looking for in the budget. So we won't miss a beat. Recycle will be continued to be picked up, and hopefully we get back in line where we think it needs to be. We only had one bidder, and it was just too high.
Thank you, John. Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
I move Resolution 5, authorizing the adoption of the Union County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
What is this?
Is anyone going to ask what it is?
That's what I just said. Yeah, what is this?
It's a fair question, Mr. Dequilla. Does anyone know what it is, John?
Not off the top of my head.
That's why we have discussion.
Mayor, I can address it. I mean, I can't tell you, give you the specifics of the plan, but it's the plan, the county adopts is a mitigation, a hazard mitigation plan for the entire county with every municipality in it. It's mandated by the federal law. And what happens is with the municipality, when they, if they adopt the plan, then they can be eligible for certain federal grants that they wouldn't otherwise be eligible for in case of emergency and destruction due to an emergency situation. So that is the basis for it. I can't explain what the plan actually is. I can't tell you the specifics of the plan, but that is the basis of joining in on the plan is to be able to receive federal grants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sordillo.
Thank you, Mr. Sordillo.
I vote, please.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
I move Resolution Number 6, authorizing the submission of a grant application in the amount of approximately $25,000 to fund evaluation and treatment of Emerald Ash Bore on ash trees.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Mr. Dequilla?
I move Resolution Number 7, authorizing a tax settlement with 22 Russo Associates, LLC.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
I move Resolution 8, proclaiming April 29, 2016, as Arbor Day in the Township of Berkeley Heights.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Perrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fascher?
Yes, I move Resolution Number 9, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Berkeley Heights Developers, LLC.
Second. Another second, any discussion?
Just a comment. This is the second time we've done this, and first of all, it's still, from what I was told, it's against the law to pass resolutions without 48 hours' notice. But this is such an important thing to the downtown of Berkeley Heights and to all the residents of this town. And I feel that even if the people don't care, they should, and they should at least have the option of knowing this is coming up with a four-day notice, like, which is standard for the rest of our agenda, and let them, if they do have a problem with it, come and speak. But putting it on the night before, not even the night before, an hour before, when I get here, I see that it's on, that's to me not acceptable. I can't even read it in that amount of time.
Yeah, I would comment on that. First of all, we've talked about this property as being a candidate for this type of project for months now. I also suggested upfront, when I made my affordable housing remarks, that it's unfortunate that it got put on this morning, but we got this, their signed version of this this morning. It's important that we do this now because we've got a case management conference next Monday, I believe. And if we didn't approve this, we've been negotiating this, what, John, you've been involved in this for months, right?
Yeah, I lost track of how many months.
And there's been a significant back and forth. We're not at liberty to go through all the gory details, but you can see in the resolution, the numbers were a lot higher that were being requested by the developer. We've talked about this litigation being fraught with peril for the municipality. It's in the best interests of the township to achieve this type of settlement. Again, the notice this morning is unfortunate, but we have talked about this ad nauseam for months now. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just on that one issue, just to parallel what Councilman Fascher said. Is this something that we have been negotiating quite some time, and we tried very, very hard to have this completed and ready to be published with the regular, when the agenda is normally published, on Friday, last Friday. But unfortunately, we were negotiating up to the last minute on certain minor points. But as Mr. Fascher said, we have a case management conference. This is one of the properties that were subject to court-mandated mediation. So the court wanted, and the court-appointed special master advised that they strongly recommended that we get this thing resolved, both sides, not just us, and prior to the case management conference scheduled for next week. And that is why, and I agree, it was unfortunate that we couldn't have it done prior because we thought we could. But by having it the last minute, we still need to have this thing approved. I will also echo what Mr. Fascher said. This is, none of the terms in here are different than what we've been negotiating with them throughout the whole process. All the terms have been discussed, and the council was aware of all the terms ahead of time. So it's, there's no surprises put in this. It's just getting it into the legalese language and finalizing it in memorandum form, which took us, unfortunately, until this morning. We got a signed copy back from, on behalf of Berkeley Heights Developers.
I guess a couple, a couple other things. First, on the legality of noticing this today, that's acceptable?
Yes, yes. The law requires that it's all reasonably possible to have things published in 48 hours' notice, but it does not restrict circumstances, items being added to the agenda up till, actually, at the meeting itself, which, you know, we've added this as early as possible. Once we, once we received the signed copy of the agreement, it was sent over to Anna immediately.
I just wanted to clarify that because the councilman brought that up, and I thought that was the case, but wanted to make sure. I guess the other thing is, with respect to paragraph 1C, was there going to be a word?
Yes, I apologize. Yes. With regard to, in the MOU 1C, the version that was distributed to the council and that was signed by the developer, does have a type, well, I don't want to say it's typographical error, it's just a prior language is in there that is not the final language that was agreed to. Once again, this was all being done last minute. We were trying to get this on to the agenda tonight so that, you know, that one portion slipped through. We've spoken to the developer and their attorney, and they understand that the agreement that's going to be signed by the municipality and initial by the developer under Page 2, Paragraph 1C, where it says that the maximum height of 42 feet would be excluding the proposed parapet, excluding the proposed parapet, that will actually be including the parapet. So it's a flat maximum height of 42 feet.
Maybe you want to explain what a parapet is?
A parapet is the edge of a building that extends above the roof or the top of the building, just along the edges to, has a number of purposes, to block any utilities and air conditioning units and so forth on the roof, but also has a safety feature for firefighters when they have to go onto the roof, or any maintenance personnel when they have to go on the roof to allow for kind of a blockage so that they don't fall off the edge. But it also has an architectural feature as well. So that parapet, it was discussed that that would not exceed 42 feet in height from the sidewalk.
Just another clarification, I guess this is. So we're dealing with 15% of an odd number. It comes out, I think, 22 and 1/2. So I assume we round up as far as the 15%